Call to order and salute to the flag, Mr. Walsh, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. School committee chair report, I have nothing to report at this time. School resource?
No report, no report for resource or school building.
All right, thank you. Policy committee, Mr. Hogan?
We had a meeting recently, we went over the crowdfunding policy, so we're working on that and getting our first draft ready. We have no policies for approval tonight, but next meeting we'll have a policy with our grading policy, the meeting to get that on the agenda. That was just some housekeeping. We're just changing the policy to reflect current practices on the reports and the schedule for report cards. So that's it.
Any questions? Seeing none, moving on to the student support subcommittee. Ms. LaBelle Pierce?
Um, I could do the report, I didn't know, Jim, if you wanted to because you took notes. No, okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so we met just last Thursday and we got an update on the hybrid model, basically just a little bit of a preview, I think, of what we might talk about tonight with the obviously, the state has created, you know, the new model that we're all going to be going back. So we got a little bit of more of a background about that. And just cohort numbers and generally just how things are going. We got an update on the telehealth services and the schools that that's been involved in, and that seems like it's been, you know, definitely a good program in the schools that have piloted it, so sounds like we'll even pursue that as we go forward. And then we had invited the CPAC officers to just kind of have an open door and understand that, you know, what the student support committee is. They had some conflicts with schedules for a lot of their officers, so hopefully we'll do that again. And and then, I don't know, Sally, if you wanted to talk about the John Fitch Highway competition at all, but we ended with that. Actually, I had called in on that meeting and lost connection right at that point, Sally, so I don't know if you wanted to update people on that.
Sure, just the update, the John Fitch Highway beautification and improvement project is huge, and we really are grateful for Jessica Stodolsky and other STEM teachers in our schools for encouraging kids to create their own drawings. I know that I just heard today at DPW, where Henry Boudreaux was having his retirement party after 23 years of service to the city of Pittsburgh, that a number of, you know, hand-drawn, hard copy applications had come in through the red box at City Hall. So people at DPW were very encouraged about that. The judges, of which I am one, I'm very honored, will be meeting on Wednesday to discuss, and that is why my hair is orange, just letting you know. I was at DPW. I do it to honor them.
That's our report, thanks.
Thank you. You know, Sally, I saw your hair today, but I wasn't going to say anything because I wasn't sure your intent, so, but anyway. You did in fact know it was, you know it's orange, right?
Yeah. Yeah. But when I go Gaga, my kids will tell me.
Okay, good. School personnel committee, that would be me. I have nothing to report this time, although I'm sure the superintendent will touch upon some of the initiatives up and coming. So executive committee, nothing to report. Student reps? Mr. Mara?
Just wanted to talk about today, thank you for being here. And we wanted to talk about the reflection of how school and especially hybrid has been going. You say that it's going very well, it's well organized throughout the day, it's pretty, it's moving flowing smoothly. That's some of the updates that have happened recently is that progress reports went out last week for students in the building. And then our fall two sports have started up, we're hoping for a great season, hoping to get in the playoffs for some of our sports and hoping for some good track meets. And then, um, and the things you really wanted to point on was pool testing, because that is one of the things that there, you have a low number of kids opting into pool testing. So you just wanted to talk about, I hope that a lot of kids walked in. I know I personally, I think, me and both Andrea are involved and opt into it. It's a really good system for you being able to easily point out kids to have been in a positive pool nicely, and then also if you've been, you'll get notified if you're in a positive pool, but also if you've been in contact with someone who tested positive, which is useful to know. So we're hoping that more kids, because at the moment now, it's only around 20%, we want that number to be much higher. So we're really hoping that a lot of kids will opt in for the better of all, and it's good for your safety too to know.
Right.
Yeah, so the next thing is Fitrick High is trying to add more students to the Cohort C, which is the group that goes four days a week. It started originally with the cohort that they were assigned to, and then today, this week on Monday, we added 130 students to that cohort, so the kids that are going to school four days a week. We don't know exactly what going, what adding more kids is going to end up looking like because of the issues of going from like six by six seating to three by three seating. There are a lot of students at this time who would like to go in person four days a week, who weren't originally included and don't meet the criteria right now, but are interested in potentially changing their cohort.
Great, and we just wanted to touch on, because you know there's talks of doing a five-day week soon, April 5th is the date in mind. We just wanted to say that there's been some commotion and some, like, kind of confusion recently between around students and parents. And it's, I think a lot of people are feeling confused about how the building will be cleaned, because we know right now that Monday is the day that we use to clean the building, which a lot of people do like, knowing that it's been sanitized between Cohort A Monday and Tuesday, and then Cohort B being Thursday and Friday to have a lot of people like that, you know, just knowing the safety, because we know the building is very safe and sanitized, and a lot of people like to keep it that way, to know that's a safe, and that, just for the safety of all. And there's also concerns about dis- distancing, as we mentioned above, with the classroom being closer, because right now we're at six, and I'll be closer to three feet, so some are concerned about the distancing between students in that area.
Yeah, and then the final thing we have tonight is the Current Events Club is finalizing the last steps in implementing the tutoring and mentoring program with Rengold Elementary School. The current start date that we have is March 29th. So we're excited to implement that and hopefully get some good relationships between high schoolers and elementary school kids. And that is all we have for tonight, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any questions? Is it, Jack and Andrea, is there a, there's a, I believe Pittsburgh is playing Leominster on the 26th? Is that football game? Is that a I think that's what's happening, right? You don't know?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
Go forth and find out for us and get that. All right. Thanks, everyone.
Mayor, I don't have a question, but I have a response. And so, Jack, I appreciate you sharing the concerns, right? I imagine the superintendent will talk about that a little bit. You know, I think it's important, you know, since you're a student rep and Andrea to the school committee, that you kind of understand that all the different layers of decision-making that go into the school year, right? And so up until now, there's been up until now, there's been local control through the school committees to kind of set the terms of return and basically what the commissioner got authorization for was the ability to make the call themselves, right? And, you know, they liken it obviously to the fact that at the state level, normally, they are the ones to kind of dictate how the school year unfolds. So COVID has upended a lot of things. So I, I heard loud and clear what your concerns are. I'm sure the superintendent's going to talk about that too and address that, but I share a lot of those concerns, you guys. As a parent of somebody going in there, so so I just, I, if you guys have questions about like how decisions are made, I think it's important to just really kind of make sure you ask those. Right now, we are not the body that's going to say it's not April 5th, right? Or it's not three feet, or it's not, you know, we're just not, we're not a-ally in that position right now, so, but it'll be good to hear the superintendent respond to your concerns. Thanks.
Okay, moving on, approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting of March 1st, 2021?
A motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion made and second to approve the minutes. Can we do this by acclamation? Is that acceptable? All right, all in favor? Aye, that is unanimous, thank you. Executive session, I don't believe there's a need for executive session, Mr. Superintendent.
That is correct.
Correct. Communications, anyone wishing to provide any communications?
I would, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, keeping with the DPW theme, just wanted to remind everyone that we are doing, we, meaning Stratton Players, the community theater are doing Artists and Ancestors, a dramatic reenactment and walking tour to be held at Forest Hill Cemetery, Pittsburgh, Saturday, April 17th and Sunday, April 18th. Tickets are free, but donations are welcome and will be shared with Forest Hill Cemetery and the Cemetery Commission. And we are reenacting everyone from Herbert Adams, the Sculptor of the Boys in the Fountain, to H.M. Francis, the master builder of Pittsburgh, Helen Stratton, former English teacher and librarian at Pittsburgh High School with Mrs. Fay Crocker, who was the producer and who also whose family was instrumental in the Crocker Elementary School that we have today. Also Cyrus Thurston, the music master of Pittsburgh. And we've got cast members ranging in age from pre-teens to people of a certain vintage. And I can't believe that we didn't have to cast the mayor, because there's a couple of parts you'd be great in. Next time, I didn't want to trouble you during budget season. But
Is it too late?
Do you want to be in it? Well, we'll have you do the next.
Well, yeah, we'll talk, we'll talk.
I know, I know, I know how to find you. But this is going to be open to the community, and it's really recommended, if you love Pittsburgh history, because our history is, is so deep, so rich, and I know at the high school, I'll ask Andrea and Jack, did you guys have the, the local history class? Did, did you take that? No, it didn't come your way?
I was supposed to take it last year, then I had a schedule change, so I never got to.
Well, you come to the show. Again, it's, it's free, and it is open to the public. There'll be a little bit of walking, we'll get to see the beauties. Forest Hill Cemetery parking is at Mount Elam. After April 5th, you can make reservations, and I'll just do this little pitch until the show happens. So, and if anyone's interested in joining Stratton Players, put something in the chat, I'll make sure you get on our mailing list, and I'll make sure that when we do full shows and there's postcards that you receive those. And if you want to be in a show, I would love to hear that. Thank you. And this is supported by Pittsburgh Cultural Council. Shout out to Pittsburgh Cultural Council for supporting this production.
Great. Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Friday, May 30 to 10:30 is the CAPS breakfast with all of the area legislators. John Cronin, Natalie Higgins, Mike Kishmaric, and all the area. If anybody has not received the Zoom invitation, let me know, I'll see that you get it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Anyone wishing to make public comment? Mr. Superintendent, or?
We have received no, but no interest right now to make any public comment.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, before we get started with what's on the agenda, I just want to give the school committee and everybody watching on TV an update as to where we're at overall with regards to reopening. On, excuse me, on March 5th, the Board of Education met and agreed to support or accept Commissioner Riley's recommendations about students returning to in-person learning. At that meeting, the commissioner proposed and the board accepted a return date of April 5th for students in grades K through 5. Subsequently, the Board of Ed and the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education issued guidance on the return of other students. First and foremost, now, in the past, in the future, the number one concern is for safety of our staff and students. And as we've made decisions, I think, six times to postpone start of hybrid, given a variety of factors, not just the COVID numbers, but, you know, the situations that our children and families are facing. I still look back and I think we made the best decisions possible based on information and guidance that we had from all sources. So one of the first things that we did when we heard the commissioner's guidance and what the Board of Ed voted was to see, are our schools ready? Are they safe? With regarding current guidance, whether it be student spacing, PPE supply, you know, how are we going to do lunches? How are we going to do transportation? So that was one of the first things we said and based, or looked at, and based on that review, we concluded that we were in a position from a safety and operations perspective to bring all our students back. So as part of the process, we met with our stakeholders and principally the teachers union. So we had conversations regarding what the Board of Education requires, and we had discussions, and in fact, we had a discussion just before this meeting. So based on their discussions, and we answered some questions earlier, which were principally around some logistics that we just have to iron out some details. We are ready to welcome students back into two modes of learning. One, in-person, full-time, and the other option is in-person, remote. We have surveyed parents in a non-binding manner, and approximately 67% of respondents indicated their preference would be to return in-person, full-time, with the balance electing to continue remote learning. We still need to formally ask, you know, all our parents if, you know, what their choices are, and to make sure that we have, you know, adequate spacing between students and classrooms. So we'll be doing that in the coming days. We also need to just work out some logistics in regards to, you know, the transportation, the start times, and I'm going to defer to Craig on the question specifically to the cleaning frequency. But I want the students, the school committee, parents, the community in general to know that safety was our first concern. Can we do it? The answer was yes, and now it's just a matter of working out some of the details. So I guess before we go, and Craig, I don't know, can you address comments made early about the cleaning frequency?
Sure. So we'll continue to clean periodically throughout the course of the day while students are there and the custodians are there between the, the operation hours, and then we'll have our night custodians on during the evening doing their their cleaning as well, along with the fogging and the disinfecting that we've been doing over the course of the last several months.
So more information to follow in the, the coming days, but we wanted to let students, school committee, parents, the community know that April 5th is the day that all grades are scheduled to return or to continue in-person, or to return to full in-person learning or to continue full day, remote. Again, there will be surveys coming out from the schools on that, and over the coming days, the school department will just be finalizing some logistical and any scheduling matters that are outstanding. Jim?
A question, Bob, I know you said that you're still working out some issues with transportation. I, I know that the, the state in Desi has said it's safe to go to three feet of spacing in the classrooms. Have, have they changed the requirements for sitting on buses? Will it still be the seating that was proposed early on in this situation where was only, what, 23 students to a bus? And, and my question is, if that is the case, and we get, even with 67% returning, if that's a higher percentage of students returning full-time, will the state provide extra funding for additional buses for us to get all of our students to their school on time for the stock time? Because we won't be able to, I'm assuming we can't load up a bus like we did prior to COVID.
Craig, do you want to answer that question? Because I know you've had a number of conversations with Donna, and, and the, the guidance on busing has changed from what it was originally from, you know, in August, so.
So, yeah, so the numbers have changed, the guidelines have changed, but based on our numbers currently in, in looking forward to April 5th, we won't have buses that would have to go to the, the maximum amount. In fact, under the guidelines as they stand with our half ridership with 23 to 25 per bus, all of our buses are at or under that capacity at this time. Donna is tracking a couple of buses that may have additional students, but we do have the flexibility right now to add a bus or two if necessary. So we feel very confident that we're going to be able to provide the, the ridership under the original guidelines, without having to double up and triple up seats in to keep our capacity at approximately 25 students per bus.
And I think, you know, I, I think maybe, Craig, could you also just clarify the three foot and six foot, and really, I don't want to say maybe the misperception that may be out there and what we've had in the schools prior to COVID.
Great. So, I mean, when, when we think in terms of the three foot of social distancing, I'm not sure that we have ever been at three feet of social distancing, at 100% students in school. So when, when you look at the high school classrooms and they do have their individual desks, that they will still be spaced four to six feet apart to the, with the understanding that the majority of our classrooms are not running at 100% capacity either. So it really is about the, the amount of students that are in any particular place, in any particular class, which does differ depending on the class that you're in, whether it's an art elective, which may be fuller than a different class. So working logistically with, with the principals so that they understand, you know, how big their sections are, will they have to do any type of rearranging of, of sections to, if you have a section of math that's at 15 and one of 22, you can, is there the possibility of, of moving students around it? But at this point, really, that, that is not even a necessity based on the capacity that we're seeing in the amount of space that we can currently provide between students at the high school. And we're working with the middle and the elementaries as well, looking at furniture, desks versus tables, and, and how to best outfit individual classes, which varies from school to school and classroom to, to classroom. Jean?
So I have a couple of things. So when will the binding survey be? I know all parents have sent like an initial thought, so when will the binding survey be? And then, and when you say binding, I mean, the assumption is that's what you pick and that's how you stay till the end of the year, right? So there's that question. And then, maybe you could speak really quickly about the idea of like lunches and the idea of corridors, because while I think we can set up classrooms to certain systems, right? When you, if you're having more kids in and every day, like, like I wonder about like the systems that exist, and this is only for the schools where kids are changing classes, what conversations are happening about maintaining distance in the corridors?
Yeah, I can jump in on a, on a couple of those questions. I mean, as far as the, the hallway procedures, and again, some classes are switching, or some schools are switching classes while others are switching teachers. So it will differ slightly, but all schools are set up with, with the, with the line so that we have folks staying on one side and on the right and on the left and socially distancing, which I'm sure when we get the increased number of students back, we're going to have to work and remind students. Quite frankly, the students have been fantastic. All the feedback that we're getting back from, from principals is that, you know, the mask wearing, and whether they're using QR codes or sign-ins for bathroom trips, everyone is adhering to all of those individual rules and regulations and doing a great job. And, and although we're anticipating, you know, an increase in, of enrollment or increase of, of numbers in the school, you know, we feel very confident that the kids are going to continue to follow, you know, stay on your side and, and keep space between you as you transition to classes and you know, and if things come up that we have to address, I, I'm sure that the administrations in the individual buildings will be quick to do that. Looking at the cafeteria, I know that we've discussed this with all of the principals. Pretty much everyone has come up with a plan so that if they have an overflow, so the Pittsburgh High could use a section of the fieldhouse. Long Joe Middle School could use the lobby upstairs or the gymnasium if necessary. So there's ways to spread the students out so that we can feed them appropriately, and working through food service with Dave Semenza and his team, all the lunches will be pretty much grab and go. So they won't be standing shoulder to shoulder in line, which we kind of envisioned the old cafeterias being, but it'll be, food will be accessible so that they can get it in, in a variety of locations in the cafeterias and then move off to a, an empty seat to sit down. So everyone's working on space as far as an overflow from the cafeteria, whether it's a gymnasium or another alternative space. And Dave has assured us that, that meals will be set up so they can be easily traveling from, from one location to another, if that's a necessity.
And I, and I guess just to go back to the question that you asked first, was when will the surveys go out? They will go out this week. I, I just can't tell you if they'll go out tomorrow or, or Wednesday, Jean?
But the, the subtext of it is you, this is what you're choosing for the rest of the year.
Yeah, and so the parents also have a choice, and I think it's in the, the guidance that came out from Desi, that, is it four weeks, John? They have a chance to change their mind too, or they have to give four weeks of notice or something like that, they want to return, is that right?
Yeah, so the, the guidance the state released last week suggests that we give parents at least, you know, a four to six week window, so they can put in a request to change, and we at least need to give them four to six weeks until we actually honor that change. So I, I mean, just, you know, talking, you know, we got to talk it out as a district a little bit more, how many opportunities will we allow students to switch back and forth? I know there was concern of some teachers thinking that kids would be able to choose remote one week and then in-person the next, and then remote again, which, you know, we, we obviously can't do that. So we need to maybe talk as a district and come up with some exact guidelines on how, you know, how long will we, you know, allow parents to wait between going from one, one model to the next, in addition to how many chances will they have to switch from one model to the next?
Yeah, I guess my question on that is, so let's say the parent chooses to send the child, right, and that just somehow, whether the child or the parent does not feel comfortable with that choice, what are we saying to them? Like, that's it, that this is what you chose? If you don't show up, you're truant, or, you know, like, what, what is the messaging about that?
Yeah, that won't, that won't happen, Jean. We're not going to say, okay, you chose one model, you're not going to be able to switch at all. I just think we need to talk about limiting. We can't have like three or four or five switches every other week. So we'll have to have a discussion on, you know, how often will we honor it? Will we only allow one? But there is guidance out there suggesting we at least give four to six weeks in between requests. So as a district, we need to come up with a, you know, a decision on kind of what we want to follow here in Pittsburgh.
John, and just, just to piggyback on that, it's, it's a lot easier for a parent, if they change their mind, if they're in person, they change to remote, that doesn't hurt our that doesn't hurt our, there's no logistical changes that we need to make. So that's probably not going to be difficult. The the four to six weeks is if we have an influx of students who are choosing to be in person, and if that's going to affect some classroom numbers, some lunch logistics, looks like transportation is going to be okay either way. That's why we would need time to to actually make room if if there's a large influx. Right now with 65%, that doesn't seem to be the case. But a parent switching from in person to remote doesn't affect our logistics at all. And and that to me wouldn't wouldn't be an issue. We have to talk that out a little bit more, obviously, but I I think that would be a pretty easy switch.
One more question, Superintendent. If the the survey goes out this week, and if the parents do not respond, do we assume, what do we assume that the student will be in person or will be remote if we don't hear from?
I think we'll have each school following up with the the parents or students that don't respond.
Okay, thank you.
Make no assumption.
All right, thank you.
Bob, do we have a breakdown of 67% by grade level?
It's it's pretty consistent across the school level, right, Adam?
Yeah, it's it's really close. I mean, overall, it's 65, 35. There's no school that is under 60 or over 70 for the full time in person. I do have the breakdown by school. I do not have it by grade level right now, but that's certainly something I could get you.
Okay.
Would you like the breakdown by school?
I was just wondering, if it was lopsided in any one area. Say, like, Rangel has 70% and South Street has 30% respondent.
Okay, there being no other questions right now for the reopening. Let's get to the agenda. Tonight, we have a presentation on the Crocker Elementary School project update. Tonight, to give us that presentation or to lead that presentation is Diana Nicholas and Ed Borje of Som Architects. And Liz Geltress and Tony DeLuzio of Colliers are owners' project manager. So Diane, I think it's your presentation to make here.
Thank you. I'm Diana Nicholas, the president at Som Architecture. And we are excited to share with you the latest developments on the Crocker design. Just a little bit about where we are in the overall process. And our OPM team may want to jump in on this as well. We are currently wrapping up schematic design. So this will be the end of sort of a significant phase. So feasibility study and then schematic design is sort of the first big step in terms of MSBA. And following schematic design, the district and the MSBA agree on a scope and a budget. So in case we have people on the call that have not seen the development of the design, I'm just going to give a little overview of the site. I think most of you know the Crocker site. You can see the existing building. And then just to the north of that, you can see the yellow volume, and that is the new building. So that means that the new building will be constructed while the majority of the existing building stays occupied. So everything except for a couple of the portables would remain until the school is open. And then the site work would be done once the existing school is demolished. So again, this is the same concept, just looking at it in site plan form. We have the existing school building and then the new building is in yellow. So one thing I'll just mention quickly is that the site is a bit challenging in that it has three tiers in terms of the topography. So we have worked hard to keep the building kind of in the middle tier of the topography so that we are not adding any, you know, additional site costs involved in cutting and filling of of the site. This is kind of a bird's eye view of the new building. You will see more that kind of explains all this as we go along, but we wanted to give you an overview of the site. So we have the new drive. You can see where the buses are. And there's a canopy into the front door. So that's the main entrance. And then down in the center, you can see at the bottom there, we have a new parking lot. And there's a connection either via stair or ramp up to the main entrance. And then beyond the parking lot is an emergency vehicle drive. So if you needed a fire truck to get all the way to the back of the site, they would have access that way. I'm going to move on to the next slide. We can come back to these renderings later. So we have two site plans to show you tonight. This one looks at what the full development of the site is, or every, the whole potential of this site. But we have also a more modified version that is a little more cost effective. So actually, it's significantly more cost effective. And but all of the site features that I just described that are required by code and for circulation, the parking lots and the walkways that are associated with getting into the building will definitely remain as would the emergency vehicle drive in the back. So talking about the exterior concepts, some of you may have heard me talk about biophilic design, which is one of the concepts, it's the key concept for us in developing the design of this building. And so biophilia is very much about humans connecting to nature. So for the students and the staff, that could be everything from natural light and windows to patterns or colors that evoke the natural environment. So we have looked at an exterior where the majority of the building is going to be sort of a cream colored. It's a fiber cement panel. And then there are areas where we've woven in some green. So you can see on the right, the panel pattern there. And our inspiration from that is, you know, in some of these other elements. So you can see in the lower left hand corner, we have the sort of triangular trees and that sort of starts to appear in this panel pattern as a more abstract expression. You can also see next to that pattern is the curtain wall pattern. So that's all colored glazing. And there's a picture down below of a project that we worked on many years ago that used similar glazing and was sort of had the same effect on the interior. So you get different colors sort of coming in with the natural light. So this is kind of a tighter view of the of the three dimensional rendering that we saw a minute ago. So again, you can see we have a canopy into the main building and this volume here is the gym. And then the volume that's closest to us houses on the first floor admin, and you'll see this in the plans, administration, and then the fifth grade. And then the volume in the back, we call the academic wing that has grades one through four. So these are the the plans, and I'll just quickly zip through these. So here's the the main entrance and the canopy. We have a waiting area for people who have business with the office or are not coming into the building, don't have a reason to go into the building. And you can see we have a couple of layers of security in that way. So I mentioned the gym and the admin, so the principal's offices, that sort of thing with the nurses suite. And then we have some other support spaces here, occupational physical therapy and an extra classroom. The purple area is the cafeteria. And so this is all open. So we have columns here and you can see when you walk into the building, and I'll show you a rendering of this in a bit. You can see into the cafeteria. And the cafeteria has kind of a raised platform that's four feet higher with these large steps that the kids can sit on. So what this does is it provides sort of two stages within that area. To zip back down here, we have the other end of the purple space is the the kitchen and sort of all the back of house spaces, the service entrances here on the left as well. So you can see the academic wing in the back. And each of these, each half of the building on each of the floors makes up a learning community. So a learning community in this building will be a full grade. The darker blue represents sped spaces. And then the areas in the core sort of that that the classrooms wrap include restrooms, janitors closets, reading, staff support, and the kinds of things that would support the learning environment in those learning communities. So on the second floor, you come up the stair here or the elevator. And then this orange area is the media center, and while I'll show you a rendering of that, which has an outdoor connection. And then we have the art room in green and the health room in that sort of pink. And then those rooms have access to the exterior as well. So, you know, if if you wanted to have you know, planters outside for a garden, that sort of thing, it could happen on this section of the roof. And this is walled in, so the kids are not, you know, jumping anywhere that they shouldn't be in this area. Oh, and this is the fifth grade. So we've advanced our biophilic concepts further. And thinking about the color palette, we are looking at sort of muted greens and yellows. So those are pretty obvious biophilic colors. You know, we think about nature and green all the time and yellow is certainly all over as well as sunshine. So we're looking preliminarily at this green and yellow palette with maybe some of these secondary colors that also have some biophilic connections, that sort of aqua and the peach colors. And you can see, you know, examples that of how those colors could be used. You can also see in one of these examples that there's a lot of wood. So we're also looking at ways to incorporate wood. But generally, the color will come through furniture or, you know, paint in selected places. So it will be a sort of muted palette for the most part with accents of color. We have some more spaces here that are inspiration for what we're doing. And one of the things I'll point out here is this this surface. So that material is oriented strand board, which we are proposing to use in certain areas of the building. It's compressed wood, so it's very, you know, biophilic in the sense that it's, you know, you can tell it's wood, you know it's wood. But also, it has it has good acoustic properties, which we need to have, the same as drywall, actually a little bit better. And it's also very durable. It's a good economical use of materials. So you can see here some more OSB walls and what those would look like. We're also studying ways that we could color those so that we'll have a little bit of variation where those occur. That's just a, and you can see there's a blow up of some OSB, as it's called. So and then on the right, the laminate millwork, you'll see in the classrooms, we have some millwork, some storage for teachers. Some of that is fixed millwork and some of it is mobile storage in each of the classrooms. And then we're using bio based flooring. So this is, it's sort of the newer, more healthy version of vinyl flooring, but it's a sheet product. It doesn't have any vinyl in it, but it's also lower maintenance. It doesn't require waxing. And there are a variety of products that fall under this category. So we look at using a lot of gray and then accenting the floor in places with some of the colored products. And then in the offices and the media center, we have carpet tile. And that's, that's really optimal for maintenance. If you, you know, stain or damage one of the tiles, they're easy to replace. So as I mentioned, this is a rendering of the entrance. So looking at the plan, on all of these renderings, you'll see this red triangular diagram. And that sort of shows you, if you were standing there, this would be your cone of vision. So if you're standing here, you're going to see this long wall. And this is, this is an example of where we're using the OSB. And we have sort of the natural color of OSB and a tinted green. But and you can see on the right, we have an environmental graphic that's very biophilic. And you could see the entrance beyond it. We wanted to create something that was fun upon entry. So we have these circles in the ceiling. Those are conical domes, dome shaped skylights. They're they're not very large, but we're kind of playing with the floor pattern and mirroring that geometry. So the darker gray is just a darker gray flooring and the lighter gray is the same. You can see the area beyond the glass there that has people waiting to get into the to the office or potentially, there's another room beyond that, which is kind of tiny to see on this plan. But for people that might be picking up a sick child, there's a more enclosed space so that a child can come through the office space from the nurse's office, meet their parent or guardian, and then exit, exit out the front door. I just want to mention also this, the the corridor here on the left is really what you're seeing here. So it connects you to, you know, these support spaces we mentioned and the nurse. So, you know, if somebody is bringing a sick student down to the nurse's office, they would be going that way. So this is the same area in large part with a kind of a different three dimensional view. So the colors here are just to sort of differentiate the spaces, but you can see like the green and yellow wall and the floor pattern, this sort of glassed in area where people are waiting, the offices, and then the hallway down to the cafeteria. And those are the, those are the public restrooms. Those are conveniently located to the gym, which is over here. So the next rendering is the cafeteria, as I mentioned. So again, here's your cone of vision. You're kind of looking at all of the the seating in the cafeteria, and the kitchen is behind you. And then you have this hallway that connects down to the academic wing. And adjacent to that is, I mentioned the tinted glass earlier. So this is the curtain wall where we have the tinted glass. So it's not used really anywhere else other than in this double height area. So it's more limited, but this is a nice area to bring the color in. We have another, you know, potential area for an environmental graphics. It's biophilic, maybe it's jungle. The green doors, the green panels are a folding panel here at the music room. So you can open that up, you know, as a second stage, as I mentioned earlier. Or you could have them partially open like this. You can see what it would be like if you're protecting in the space or using it for more of a performance. So same, same thing, different view. So here's the music room and here's the raised platform with a ramp and all the seating. And the seating is obviously not fixed. It's very mobile. And we're looking with the furniture designer on types of furniture that are very flexible and durable, but could accommodate different activities within this space because it's really kind of the heart of the school. I haven't really touched on the extended learning areas. Here's one of them. So that's an area where a couple of students or maybe some students and a teacher could be having some kind of learning exercise outside of their classrooms. So second floor, this is the media center. Oh, see, I was, I misspoke when I said we were only using the colored glass in one spot. I forgot about this one. But the media center, again, this is sort of preliminary furniture concepts, but has the carpet, as you can see. Looking at the plan, you're standing here, looking towards the arts classroom here, or sorry, that's the health classroom. What else? And then you have this hallway that you can see, you can't see it here on the right, but this is a partial light wall. So you'll have bookshelves against it, against the partial light wall, but then you can see over into the sort of entrance into the fifth grade learning community. Again, we're looking at this in 3D. So media center, art and health, and then this outdoor access. So we talked about with the ramp and the stairs and listed steps. This is an outdoor learning area and it kind of, it can connect to the green, although you know, we would want that to be enclosed somewhat. So that's something that we'll look at more in the next phase, which is called design development. There are a lot of items that are conceptual at this point. That's one of them. And then you will see during design development as these things progress. So this is a look at a typical classroom. So everybody has, you know, a good amount of natural light and views to the outdoors. We've created this taller window in every classroom. So, you know, kids can come up and sort of have a bit more connection, connection to the outdoors. I mentioned the fixed millwork storage here. This would be, these would be sort of the rolling carts, the aqua things. And then you can see we have teaching walls on either side of the window walls. We also have doors that connect to the other classrooms. That's a code requirement based on the occupancy. So that's what you see there. But I think from what we've heard, that's also beneficial for the teachers. Sometimes if one teacher is trying to keep an eye out while the other one steps out for a minute. So all of the rooms have really, the majority of the building has two by four ceilings with two by four lights. In some cases, we have two by two lights. And then we have a variety of furniture solutions that are being proposed. Again, all Again, all really flexible, mobile, so that teachers have a number of ways to lay out the classroom and, you know, bunch students or not, or create more independent experiences. And, and the furniture changes, of course, as the grades go up so that you get to something that's more like single desks in the fifth grade. So this is what we are calling the biophilic court. So you can see this area on the plan, again, the cone of vision. So on the left is this extended learning area that is on the lower level. And then to the left of that, there's a double height space with a skylight. So it brings natural light into the core of the building on that lower level. And these aqua things are again, something that's very conceptual. Those could be some kind of biophilic sculpture or, you know, something that's hanging that would evoke something from nature. You can also again, see the use of the OSB and you can see some of the stained OSB beyond that. So you might have noticed that this sort of triangular slices of green and yellow are meant to tie to the exterior design as well. So here's the biophilic court in this 3D. And then you can see the extended learning areas. So this would be the first grade and this would be the second grade. We also have areas where there's outdoor access and we continue to provide different types of views to the exterior from the corridors so that, you know, again, you have that connection to nature continuously. You can also see here another outdoor learning area. It's really kind of a courtyard and, you know, folks can bring their students out in this area. And, you know, it's, it's a sort of sheltered area because you're, you have the building wrapping around three sides of the space. So we talked some about the interior colors earlier and we've also talked about the extended learning spaces. So another biophilic concept is that potentially a number of the extended learning spaces would be associated with certain biomes or environmental or environments sort of concepts. So, you know, maybe you have a jungle or a desert or mountains or beach. And so also something that will evolve in design development, but we've just kind of started looking at some renderings. So the extended learning tends to be at the end of each learning community. And so this one would be sort of more beach, you know, you have flooring. Again, it's that same bio-based flooring, but maybe it's a little more evocative of sand and you have a pattern that might be a little more evocative of water. Just, you know, to kind of get the students thinking about that. And then they can all have these associations with the different biomes and sort of what their characteristics are. And then this is one that's sort of more the, the mountain idea with the purple. And the colors are still to be determined in, in all of these. So this is in the academic wing. It's down one of those long corridors. You can see the restrooms here. We have, you know, visual access of the sinks, but we're calling it out with sort of more of the colored OSB. And then again, that triangulated pattern that you see on the exterior. But then all of the walls that wrap on the classroom side are just white drywall. And there'll be something there that will allow the teachers to hang student work. Maybe it's a tack board or a text strip or something of that nature so that, that student's work can be shown in the hallway. So this is that courtyard I mentioned. And as there's access here and back on, on the other side of the swell that you can't see. And then this would be that, the rooms that run on the backside of the admin space. So there's a classroom down to the nurse's office. You can see in this, a good representation of the taller windows that we have in the classrooms. So this is another outdoor area that is off of the music room. So this is the outside of the music room. And then this lower area is a connection. If you were to come down the ramp that goes towards, towards the academic wing, you come out this way. This is an area where we have to deal with a pretty significant slope downward as it, as the grading currently exists. So these might be concrete walls that could also sort of, you know, tier the space or tier the, the landscaping. So this is, this is the academic wing in the back. And I didn't mention that it also has the same type of conical skylights in the back. So that is the end of the presentation and we are happy to, to entertain your questions.
Hi, may I start? This, this is Jim, a great presentation. In this picture here where you have the OSB walls with the different stains, those are sealed with some kind of protective coating, urethane or whatever, is that correct?
They are, yes. So they have, they have a, they would have a fire penetrant in them. And all of these things are non-toxic and Green Guard certified and that sort of thing. So, you know, we're looking carefully at not only the makeup of the OSB itself and what's contained in that, but then what would be applied. So beyond the retardant, there would probably be a water-based stain. And then you would have like then four more layers of like a clear finish. That's going to make it more smooth. You can still sort of feel the texture within that, but it's very well sort of sealed. And nobody's going to get splinters when they're walking through the space or anything like that.
Second question, in the classrooms where the windows, will, will there be room back in any shades? So if a teacher wants to show a movie or a film, that would be possible?
So that's, yes, it's the short answer. That's sort of a design development kind of level of detail. But yes, there will be shades of some sort. I'm not sure if they are, you know, 100% room darkening, but they will support, you know, the AV projection or whatever technology they may be using.
And my last question is dealing with lighting. Um, is before I retired, I was a librarian and many libraries that I worked in had areas where it was next to impossible to change lights without putting in scaffolding. And I'm assuming most hallways, classrooms, the extent that learning areas would all be easily accessible to the custodial staff to, to go in and replace a burned out light. Though by realize the gymnasium and maybe the cafeteria would be a higher situation. But answer my question, in all cases, it would be normal ways to go in and change a burned out light, yes?
Yes. I mean, the, the hallways are nine foot six and, you know, so standard ladder replacement as possible there. You're correct about the gym and somewhat the cafeteria, but it's, it's not as high as the gym, obviously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Lot of question, but just a comment. I really enjoyed the presentation. I thought all the concepts of the different landscapes were really great. A simple concept to use in a school and I really enjoy that. The skylights, having the natural light coming in. And then particularly the alternative learning spaces, I thought were really good. With someone with ADHD in grade school, having to go to those alternative learning spaces was always kind of tough because it was like, so it was during the, it was in the administration, administrative side of the building. So it was really kind of being put in the corner. So looking at the blueprint, having those spaces kind of conveniently placed in the academic wings. I just really like to see that. And I think I saw a meditation room.
There is a meditation room in the admin wing. Yes, it's just across the hall from the nurses area.
I love that. And I hope that's, you know, utilized to its fullest. I think that's a great tool to have. So great presentation, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi Diana, this is Jean. Yeah, I just want to echo that this is beautiful as that external view is just gorgeous of all the external views you showed us there. And I had a question about the cafeteria. Actually got a text from somebody as, who's at home watching the meeting. And there was just that question about like access to the cafeteria and little kids, right? Like, so is it true open concept there or, or is there a way to like, you know, I think of elementary school kids all running around, right? Like in kind of chaos in a cafeteria. So I wonder if you could take us back to that, that view.
Sure, I'm going to use this as the plan. So it is open. There are doors here and then there are doors in the hallway beyond. So just for that ramp, see the ramp there that goes down. There are doors there and it's really up to the school how they use the doors. I mean, they're definitely, they're there for several reasons. Like if, for instance, if you have a gym event and the public comes to that, they can't get to the rest of school, but they can still get to the restrooms. So, but it is meant to be open. You know, the students are really going to be sort of in the heart of this area, but they could, you know, walk back to the academic classroom or, you know, walk if they get through these doors, you know, back towards the admin. But we do have these, you know, we have two sets of double doors at, well, really three at the entry. So we have been also reviewing this. We have a security consultant and then we're also working with the city on, you know, ways to make sure that it's, it's secure.
Yeah, that would be my question. Just trying to think of the logistics of, of that openness there. But it's, it's beautiful. It's definitely something you'd like to see and you hate to have to even ask a question like that. But it is, it is a very wide, open area.
It is, yes. But you could, I mean, you could close it off again with the doors if that's what, you know, seems to work best for the school. That's definitely an option. I think it's also a little bit, you know, when you go to the existing Crocker School, the doors to the cafeteria, cafeteria there are always open just across from the office. And it's nice to be able to kind of see that large light space. And maybe there are students in there. Obviously that one's easier to close with those doors, but you would just close, close them closer to the office in this case.
I would just like to thank you again, Diana, Diana, for another wonderful presentation. Your presentation a couple of years ago, Sam, is really what we wanted to see at the time, using nature, natural light, surroundings. And you're really bringing it to life. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pete.
Diana, this is Jim again. I have one last question. Could you go back to one of the first slides where you do like a, an aerial view of the, the layout of the, the, the new school? And my, my question is, as you do the landscaping and you have the fire lane access, towards the, the back end of what is now that play area, there's entrance into Audubon land, which I know a Crocker school has used in the past for science. And I'm just wondering, when you do the landscaping, are you aware of that access? There's a trail that goes in from the back to the Audubon land?
Yes. Okay. We, we are aware of that and our landscape architect is also aware of that.
Okay.
So we've talked about even some sort of concepts, you know, of how you would access that. But again, we're more in design development. But yeah, that's, that's one of the real benefits to this site, absolutely.
Thank you again, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Diana, this is the mayor. I just want to, I want to inform the committee that, that we are still working with Sam and, and Coggers to bring this project to affordability. All right, so I just want you all to know that we're working with those folks to bring the cost down. You know, with the increase in, in enrollment has added to the cost of the project. So I just want you to be aware that that is a challenge that we, we've taken on and we're going to work with. But it's a, it's kind of a moving target. So this schematic design, Anthony, you're on, you're on, aren't you, Delusio?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You want to touch on that a little bit and talk about some of those challenges, if you will?
Sure, I, I appreciate you leading me into that. So Colly is project manager, Anthony Delusio here and with me is Liz Geldrich. Thank you all for having us. While the presentation that, that I make is nowhere near as glitzy and glamorous and wow factor as Sam's, we have the dubious job of trying to balance all the wonderful things you've seen here tonight with the city's budget and fit those within the requirements of our wonderful MSBA, Mass State Building Authority, who sets limits on everything. And they provide reimbursement based on per student, students per square foot, cap limits on how much site work they'll fund, which is exactly why you see the two options, Site Plan A and Site Plan B. So Diana and her team have brought this pretty much to the level that you see here as of March 5th. March 5th, we sent this package out to two independent estimators. Both of them create full detailed construction project estimates on everything that you've seen here. You know, drilling down even in a more details because they're making the assumptions that Diana and her team are going to develop in the next phase of design. So it's a full-blown estimate. Those estimates are due to the project team somewhere around the 19th to the 22nd. So Friday, early next week, maybe. And then we spend the next week and a half through the beginning of April, with the two estimators kind of banging heads in the room, the architect, the OPM, city members that will attend to that, as well as any input that we get from the MSBA. And we pretty much do a balancing and we're trying to develop scope, budget and, and, and quality. You know, so whether it's an item that we look at from the durability standpoint, as you mentioned, Jim, you know, the OSB board. What are the kind of initial costs versus long-term durability, maintenance costs? How many, how much of the play fields can we afford from Site Plan A? Or are we back to the very basic Site Plan B, looking at code requirements? So our goal is to come back early April, the first week of April, somewhere between the 5th and the 8th, meet with the school building committee, update them on the Cost Balancing Act that we're going through. And just as the mayor was saying, some things are going to come in, some things are going to go out. We're going to look at the cost of doors, windows, glass, glazing, interior, fit, finish. Where do we swap, you know, carpet for sheet good flooring, anything like that to bring the project into the approved MSBA budget? And, and we need to have that done about that first weekend, April. Finalize what the state calls their Form 3011, which is the scope and budget sheet. From there, we'll go to school committee again. We'll go from there to city council and then wrap that up on about April 26th, back at the school building committee for a formal vote to submit the project. So really all the concepts that you've seen here tonight, we're going to drill down on what the cost of all those concepts are. We're going to balance them all out over the next, you know, course of the month of April and really solidify the project details and parameters that we can afford in the month of April. We have to have the project submitted schematic design submission, which is what you're looking at here. We're calling this our schematic design. So we have to have this, the estimates, along with many other documents submitted to the Mass School Building Authority on May 5th. From May 5th through June 23rd, we again, go through a number of reconciliation balancing meetings, scope and budget meetings with the Mass School Building Authority. And their board is set to vote on this project on June 23rd. So that's a very important date. We've got to make sure that our Department of Education information, our square footages, our cost estimates, site designs, building designs, everything is balanced out for them so that we get a successful vote of the Board of Directors of MSBA on the 23rd. So your key dates that I ran through there that really you need to have in your mind. May 5th, we have to submit the project. So your project team has to have this thing well-balanced out. Eyes dotted, Ts crossed by May 5th. And then we await the MSBA's board vote on June 23rd. And based on a successful vote there, we then have 120 days to work with the city to secure all of the funding options, whether it's bonds, bond appropriation, financial issues, and work all that out through September 21st of this year, September 21. Okay, thank you, Anthony. Questions? Thank you.
If there aren't any more questions, then I'm going to close the presentation.
Thank you, Diana. Nicely done. Thanks.
You get all the good questions, Diana. Nobody wants to talk schedule.
No, I'm sorry, Tony.
Bob, you got it again. It's back in your court.
Okay, thanks. So next on the agenda, actually, the next item is not required for the to meet the commissioners and the Department of Ed's requirements for grade five as we're looking to bring all grades back on on April 5. So this agenda was put together early Wednesday morning before we had had meetings to finalize. So this was just a placeholder at the time. The next item, I'm going to ask Mr. Shalfo to talk about the MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding for the Every Student Succeeds Act Regarding Transportation Claiming Under Title 4E of the Social Security Act. So that mouthful, Mr. Shalfo, can you explain, I guess, the reason the board or the school committee needs to vote on that?
I can do that. Thank you. And the the action item before you tonight, committee, is that the school district enter into this memorandum of agreement and it's between the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and the Department of Children and Family Services. And this basically allows us to receive some portion of reimbursement for transportation of students who are in DCF custody or are considered homeless. So this is something that we do each year. This is a new opportunity for us. So this simply allows us to venture into this agreement that we will accept the reimbursement for transporting the homeless children that are in our care, in DCF's care.
Hey, any, any questions on that last item?
Does this require a vote, Bob?
It does. It does require a vote, Craig.
Okay, it does.
And lastly, Craig, if you just want to quickly go over the donations at South Street, the high school, and we have some grants tonight.
So we have two donations to be accepted tonight. Wanted to thank Deb Duto and Molly Rita Nurses at South Street for coordinating with Kristen Morse, who was the Gables Resident Care Director. And they have donated to the district 240 Abbott Binax Now tests that we can use in collaboration with our pool testing. And that is approximate value of $1,200. And Mr. Roach has also received a donation from Webster First Federal Credit Union of $500. And that is to be used for gifts for the class of 2021. We also have grants to be submitted tonight. We have three grants. 21st Century, which we do quite often, that is up to $150,000 of grants. And that is the new competitive round, the new application for the next competitive round for the 21st Century After School Program. And that is at McKay. We also have the Student Opportunity Act. This is a portion of it, this evidence-based program supplemental grant. And that's between $10,000 and $100,000. And that is to support and enhance Acceleration Academy, some school opportunities, summer learning, educated diversification, early college and early literacy. And lastly, we have the Growing Literacy Equity Across Massachusetts Grant or the Glean Grant. And that is a range between $20,000 and $300,000. And that is to support implementation of a multi-tiered system of support district-wide. And those are the action items that we have for this week.
Thank you, Ms. Shalfo. Just before the school committee votes on the action items, just a reminder that number 2150-2021, I guess we would like to withdraw that action item.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we bundle action items 21-49, 20-51, 21-52, and 21-53.
Second of the motion, the bundle. Motion made and seconded to bundle. Let's take this by roll call. Ms. Greenleys, would you start the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor DiNatale?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Cragan?
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
We are unanimous.
All right. Thank you.
Like to make a motion that we approve the bundle that was just approved?
Second. Motion made and seconded. Let's have a once again, roll call vote on this, please, Ms. Greenleys.
Yes, Mayor DiNatale.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Cragan?
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Horgan?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. No, seeing nothing else on the agenda, do I have a motion to adjourn? Unless there's any statements that need to be made? Motion to adjourn. Motion made, motion made and seconded adjourned. I'll do this by unanimous consent. All in favor, I thank you, everyone. Have a great, great evening and see you on the other side.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Bye, everybody.